Hey guys and welcome back to another video. So today I'm gonna be doing something a little bit different. I'm gonna be doing like a real time video of me just drawing in my sketchbook, so I've liked studying. And today we are gonna be doing faces. So if you want to follow along and draw along with me, I have made a Pinterest board called "Study Sessions Faces", I'll leave it in the top link with the description box. And yes, so that's what we are gonna be doing. And I'm gonna be using pen. So if you don't know what a study session is, it's kind of me just practising, or anyone just practising, drawing things over and over so they get used to it. And that is what I'm gonna be doing. So it'll look something like a full page. So I'm gonna do it on this side. But I think I'm gonna need a sketchbook to rest on. So I'll use this older one. Use this one here. Look, you find, got it? I should have prepped this before I did it. I know. I'll use one of these. Yeah, that's better. Right, so I may have done this circle a bit too far up for this one because they have buns in their hair, so... I'll just do it anyway and we'll see what it looks like. So I actually haven't warmed up today. But that's fine. It's been absolutely scorching in the UK. I don't know if anybody else in the UK struggled with the heat, but I did. Okay, so let's go up here. I wanna try and get them in like a cartoony style. Of how I draw them. I'm not going to do it realistic. I feel like it's too far out. Wait one second, let me zoom in. A little bit more. There we go. I don't think there's any way to get this aesthetically pleasing. There we go. See, this is all the stuff that I end up cutting out. So that's one eye. Then she has an eyebrow. Something like that. And then the other eye. It also has eyelashes. And then the bottom lid goes there. Just like that. And then we have the other brow. Kind of a bit thicker than that, so we'll just thicken that up. There we go. The reason I'm drawing in pen is because it's supposed to train and to draw light-handed instead of like dark, like minors. You can only just see her ears. Just go something like that. Something is not right. See, I use the Rodgon mask method. So you obviously get your nose from that. And then obviously this top line is like eyebrows. Like that. And then you have your eyes. I usually like going realistic. But I've sort of changed my mind recently. So this is an old man, this one. So he'll have curly eyebrows, curly beard. I'm gonna put that first drawing down to a rough one because I've only just started drawing today and yeah. I think what happens is it's the it's the face section sometimes that gets me. And I should just remember to draw it how I like to draw it. And sometimes it's like that. He's got his eyes squintered. And he does have like a little quiff hairstyle. I'll draw his ears in. I've drawn that one a little bit small. But that is fine. And then he has his collar. Like that. And then we'll shade his hair in as well. I know with pen you get left with like these ugly lines, but I don't really mind that, to be honest. See, sometimes I like doing eyes like this. And then we'll do a circle, but then like I've drawn so many of these in this sketchbook that I just remember how to do it. Sort of draw it like that. If any of you are drawing along, you can actually send this to me on, um, what's it called? Instagram if you like. I'm not a fan of this first one. It's really doing my head in. Let's try this one. Sort of has a face like at an angle. Gonna draw the mask again. See, there's one drawing that I really like. But I liked what I did with it. So let's do the nose. Like that. Obviously that follows up. And then it's the eyes. So do I might just do this like I always draw them. I really like drawing them like this, but sometimes it feels like it doesn't look right. Does that make sense? I don't know. Do a little bit of eyelashes in there. And then the brow. I think it was just because I was warming up, I think. I think I'm getting it now. Alright. And then somehow we've gotta get this lip in. I hate drawing lips. I don't know about you guys, but lips are like the bane of my existence. Anyone like knows how to draw lips? Any tips? In fact, I should have done a study session on lips, shouldn't I? Now, this is the hardest part for me sometimes. It's getting that... Maybe it's something like this? I don't know, we'll see. You know, sometimes art doesn't always turn out great. And sometimes I feel like some people only show their good drawings. Do you know what I mean? Does that make sense? Might make sense. I've drawn this far too this way, but never mind. I'm alright with it. I'm okay with everything I draw. 10 minutes later, burns the whole page. I'm sure you guys will do an amazing job if you're drawing along. See, I am actually only just working on faces, um, because it's something I feel like I struggle with. Well, put in a style, put in my style to it. That's what I mean. Like once I've found the the style, like the one that I'm like gonna draw all the time, I think I'll be happy. See, I was gonna use green to make things pop and stand out like this. But I think I'm gonna redo that first one. I don't like it. Uh, what do we do with this one? Probably do that. My green highlight is running out. I might do a post-it note over this one. And I'll redraw it later. Let me know in the comments below if you have drawn something that you don't like. I'm pretty sure everybody has. And then someone else will probably be like, "Oh, but it's actually really good." Alright, let's draw. Draw this man. He's got a massive beard. And a big quiff. And he's sort of like on an angle. But I've drawn him straight, so never mind. Giving him a bigger nose, but that's okay. I can draw smaller eyes. Yeah, let's give him like slit eyes. Like this. He's looking to the side. I feel like I'm slowly getting the hang of drawing faces. Beard. A big one. It comes up into like a sideburn as well. Let's give him an ear. The forehead. See, I feel like I'm getting it now. Feel like I am getting it. And then he's got, that's fine. And then he's sort of like got a suit on as well. Which comes out. And down. Around, a button or two. And I will shade that in. See, it's weird because you can get faces that you don't like, but you could say they're just in your style. And, um, because like caricatures are really cool. And I'll highlight this one in green as well. He's got white hair, so I'm not gonna color it in. I wish this didn't run out. Now, there's also a question. Um, do you, can you draw, do you draw men better? Do you draw women better? That is a question. I wanted to do like a side view, but I really struggle with those. But I am going to attempt it anyway. Do I just go over it with this on this one? With the man's side view or not? I might do it in pencil. I think that's what happens when you do it in pen. Sometimes it can be really tricky. I need to remind myself of a side view because I can't remember. Something like that. And then we need to try and get that mask method in. And then his ear, his ear. That rhymed. And he's got a big honker of a nose. And then all you can see is his glasses. You can't see his eyes. He's got like an old chin. That comes down into his shirt. Very nice. Smart man. See, I should have done this in pencil, but I'm trying to learn how to draw it in, draw it in pen. So I'm not worrying about things. And then obviously he's got his tufts of hair. Like that. And then just do lines. And then his mouth. Sort of sad. He's got a big nostril. Sort of looks like a younger old man. It might be because I haven't put many wrinkles on him. That's fine. Can fix it. Ah, that's why. It's because there is no connection to his jaw. This line won't be there. And you'll see soon because I'm gonna get rid of it. I am not sure when that stopped recording. I've reached my limit, that's why. I'm just gonna add some wrinkles in there. And then some more here. Don't know if that's right or not. I'm going to erase some stuff. And hopefully we can see that it looks like an old, oh dear, an old man. If you would like to see more of these, um, real-time study drawing videos, just thumbs up the video and leave a comment down below whether you'd like it. I'm just trialing it, something different, something new. Hopefully I will do it again. Because I can't enjoy it. Hmm, this, I don't know. I feel like he's not old as he is in this picture and it might be because I don't know. Old people are something I need to work on. I don't know if that worked. Just add a few wrinkles to the guy. And then we'll just color his shirt in green. Why not? Not balls. And what I'll do is I will redraw the eyeball. That I rubbed out. Okay, that's brighter. I didn't realise I was recording really dark. What I'll do is I'll pause it there for a sec and then I will come back and draw more. Alright, so I just took a little bit of a break, um, and now I'm back. I went for a walk. And I am back. I need to glue that bottom corner. I must have missed that. I did glue it down whilst I was waiting. So I think what we're gonna do is attempt a side view. So we're gonna attempt to do that using the Loomis method. Which is sort of that shape. And we're gonna draw the old man that I drew before. I drew him here. I think I wanna see if I can get it a little bit better this time. So zoom in on that photo. And attempt to do it. Alright, so he's got a honker of a nose. Big nose. It sort of like comes in like that. Connects to his bushy brow. His eye. And then it goes up, I think, like that. Curl it around a little bit because it looks a bit odd. And his, his mouth sort of comes in a bit, doesn't it? Like that. And then, don't know about this chin. Might be something like this. Rough hairline. But his head comes down like into like that. And also his floppy chin. Alright, I think it's something like that. Might have drawn his neck too long. I think it doesn't go like that. He's got a long neck now, guys. Long neck man. It should have come here. Like this. We might be able to fix that if we just shade it in. See what that looks like. Might still look like he's got a long neck. It is a turtleneck, so let's just pretend it is. And then we'll lightly shade it in. Just like that. Yeah, that's okay. See, I don't know what type of style you'd, you'd call this. Because sometimes you can have see, let me just draw these, these quick eyes here. And eyebrows. It's weird because I, I feel like I always change my style up so much. Shade that. Shade that and then this pen will be running out soon. If you don't know what pen this is, it's just an ordinary round stick thick pen. I've got loads of them. They're my absolute favourite. Okay. See, I like drawing eyes like this. But for some reason they look weird when I draw them on characters. I don't know. Yeah. Oh, they're just fun to draw. I saw a TikTok the other day that said "Oh, I'm not sure if I saved the sound or not, but it was something to do with an artist that draws eyes, then becomes known for just drawing eyes all the time. And now they're an eye artist." And I just laughed because I thought that could have been me. Because I love drawing eyes. Does anyone else love drawing eyes? I know I do. Okay, and then we'll put some shading in the middle like that. Little bit of lines and then some mini eyebrows. Yes. So I feel like I've ruined that now. I've made it. Does anyone's pen just run out for no reason? It's white gel. Supposed to be the best white gel as well. I fancy a cup of tea. I might make one later. Hmm, what else? There's just so many different styles of drawing. Okay, let's, let's do another one. Let's do it right here. Mask method again. And then we'll draw in. Do we attempt the lips? I think so. Let's just do it and see what happens. See, it, it looks off for some reason. I don't understand why. Oh my god. I don't know. Sometimes you just do things and you don't know. You just don't know whether you're sure or not. I don't know. But it's fine. It is absolutely okay. Let's practise lips for a little, for a little bit. Draw some lips. For some reason I'm struggling to draw them. In fact, I think I can draw them. It's just I struggle to draw them proportionally correct on a person. Does that make sense? And then you get pouty lips. Which come all the way up like you get realistic lips, cartoon lips. So that goes up like this. And then it folds down. I don't know how you're meant to break that up, but let me draw you green lipstick. A cartoon lip. Let's see, let's see, let's see. Let's see how fast I can do it in pencil. We've already gone too far there. So if you, if, if you have learnt anything from, from this, that's good. If not, no, but no worries. Or you could let me know how your study session has gone. I am quite pleased with mine, even though some of it might be some drawings might be weird or not. Doesn't really matter. And we have another eye. I don't know if it goes outside, but this guy has cool hair. Too bad you're not gonna be able to see it. Because it's gonna go over into this ladies. I feel more comfortable drawing in pencil than I do in pen. I'm just gonna shade it in anyway. I know it's gone over that woman's hair, but it's alright. He doesn't look too bad down there. I'll probably go over it in pen later. Alright, so that is the finished session for today. session for today. Um, I'm just gonna add a little bit lines there and probably, yeah, I don't know. But yes, um, if you did enjoy this study session, please leave a like. Um, I'm gonna keep as much of it in real time as possible. If you would like more of these study sessions where I draw in real time and I don't like cut sort of things out, just, uh, let me know and I'll make more of them. And yeah, I just want to say thank you so much for watching. If you did join along, don't forget to send me them on Instagram. Um, I'll leave a link to that in the description box below. I also upload a lot more on TikTok. You will find me more on there and you get to see, uh, you know, some of the things I've drawn in the past. So yeah. Thumbs up the video if you liked it. Comment below what you think. Share with your friends, subscribe for more and I will see you next time with another video. Okay. Bye bye.